Hey, hey, one, two, checking YouTube audio.
Okay, welcome, everybody, to the City of Delafield Common Council meeting for December 16th, 2024, coming to order at, I'm sorry.
Common Council.
Land Commission meeting, coming to order at, and December 18th, at 7:00 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
All right, Mayor Eiker.
Present.
Commissioner Cahalan.
Here.
Alder Person-Grimmer.
Here.
Commissioner Hausman.
Here.
Commissioner Jashinsky.
Here.
Commissioner Merrick.
Here.
Commissioner Schultz.
Here.
City Planner Amy Barrows.
Here.
And Commissioner Cranky and Building Inspector Scott Hussinger are both excused today.
All right, great. So, item number four, discussion and possible action on the following minutes from November 20th. Our regular meeting minutes are in the packet, looking for a motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Any discussion or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, or abstentions? Okay, minutes are passed. So, item five, citizens' comments for items on the consent agenda. And so this would be limited to item 6A, which is Village Square, requesting for a plan of business operation for permanent signage for Brook Rose Massage Therapy. Any comments on that? Okay, hearing none, citizens' comments for consent agenda items is now closed. Item six, consent agenda.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, or abstentions? Okay, motion passes. So if you are here for 3037 Village Square Drive, Brooke McLaughlin, for Brook Rose Massage Therapy, you have been approved. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the night, if you like, or you're welcome to leave if you care to watch us at home. Thank you, and good luck with your new business. All right, item seven, public hearing number one, text amendments for Chapter 52, City of Delafield zoning ordinance regarding tobacco shops. I don't know if there's any comments for that, or if you want to introduce the topic, please, Amy?
Sure, I'll just quick introduce the topic, and then we'll have a discussion and action later on in the evening. So, last month, we discussed potential text amendments to provisions related to tobacco shops and adult-oriented establishments. Plan Commission did decide to initiate the application and schedule the public hearing for this month's meeting. So in your packet, you'll see proposed language. The public hearing and Plan Commission action related to the public hearing is really specific to just cross-referencing Chapter 10 in the zoning districts where tobacco shops are allowed. They're specifically listed out in the B-1A, B-6, CBD-1, and CBD-3 districts, and then in a couple of other districts, CBD-2 and CBD-4, that it references CBD-1, so they would also be allowed in those districts. And then council, and you can make a recommendation to council later on in the evening, but then council will consider additional amendments to Chapter 10, which include additional provisions related to where those types of operations can occur in order to further protect public safety, health, and welfare, and limit the proliferation of such uses. So, they're slightly different, but the tobacco shop type uses would be limited to no more than one tobacco shop within 1,500 feet of each other, and then they have to be 1,000 feet from certain uses like churches, schools, parks, and residential properties. And then, the only slight difference with adult-oriented establishments is that that distance is 900 feet. And that language is similar to what other communities have in their codes. And then I did just add, the only thing that I would add to the text that I would draft an ordinance for, for common council, when we refer to cigarette licenses in Chapter 10 and cross-reference that in Chapter 52, I would add electronic vaping devices and tobacco products retailer licenses, provided the city attorney is okay with it.
So do we need a motion on this?
No, just open it up for the public, and then we'll close it and discuss it later in the agenda.
Anyone who wishes to speak to this part of the public hearing? Going once, twice? Okay.
Well, there's a long section in our code. It's a, adult-oriented establishments, all communities, per the statutes, had to incorporate language to allow them somewhere in their community. So a lot of this stuff is coming straight out of the statutes, but if you want me to read the definition, it includes but is not limited to adult bookstores, adult motion-picture theaters, adult mini-motion picture establishments, adult cabaret, and further means any premises in which public patrons or members are invited or admitted to, which are so physically arranged so as to provide booths, cubicles, rooms, compartments, or stalls, separate from the common areas of the premises for the purposes of viewing adult-oriented motion pictures, or where an entertainer provides adult entertainment to a member of the public, a patron or a member, whether or not such adult entertainment is held, conducted, operated, or maintained for profit, direct or indirect. There's lots of stuff that...
And the intent of this is just to provide prudent restrictions that don't exist today? Any other comments for this public hearing? Okay, hearing none, the public hearing number one is now closed. On to item number eight, citizens' comments for items other than what's on the consent agenda, so this is anything else that we're bringing up tonight. And if you feel like you have a popular topic, and you're hitting nerves of other people that are here to support you, you can lean over your shoulder and ask for a hand raising, if you'd like, so that other people aren't necessarily brought up to be redundant, but okay, anyone like to talk to anything on the consent agenda, other than, like, anything that's on our agenda tonight? Mr. Ryer.
Good, thank you.
I thought you might want to speak.
My name is Jim Ryer, and I'm at 924...
Please speak in the mic, I'm sorry. Just press the flat bar on the bottom, and the green light will turn on. There you go.
Do I put the thumbs up to this on here?
However you many times you want.
My name is Jim Ryer, and I'm at 924 Lake Drive, City of Delafield, and I have public comments. Basically, I'm, first of all, seeking that the, hopefully, that the commission will approve the applicant's request for the site plan and appearance as stated on the agenda. And I want to also introduce the fact that other members of the board, of the Delafield Arts Foundation, of which I'm the president, also are submitting their approval, so the plan and recommending it. And one of the board members, Pat Barwig, is here today, but the others who are not here are Chris Anderson, Suzie Austin, and Claire Peterson. And I wanted that to be addressed for the record. In addition, the St. John's Estates developer, George Irwin, also advised me that I could present to the board, to the commission, that he approves the request by the applicant. In addition, the business owner of Revere's Restaurant, Chris Leffler, also informed me that he is approving the plan, and asked me to convey that to the commission. And in addition, there is John Colby, who is the president of the Ice Age Trail Association in Wisconsin, and he's a resident of the city. He also asked me to convey his approval to the recommendation and recommendation that the applicant's application be approved. So I believe that covers everyone here, and just wanted to thank you for your time and energy on this. We're looking forward with partnership, involving the city, nonprofits, and the other business people in the community. And I am doing so as a resident, but also as president of the Delafield Arts Foundation, and also organizer and leader of the Friends of Bark River. So thank you very much. Have a nice night.
Thank you very much, Jim. Are there any other citizens' comments for items on anything to do with the agenda tonight? Tim?
Good evening, my name is Tim Ternock, 304 Field, Stone Road, Delafield. As a member of the Park and Rec Commission, we've spent a considerable amount of time studying the future stage that we'll be discussing later tonight. I'm hoping you'll give it every consideration, as we have in other groups and Delafield has, and upon a successful conclusion on your part, we look forward to other groups joining forward, such as, like, the Tourism Bureau and the Chamber of Commerce. I think, once everybody's on board, this will happen much faster. So, again, thank you, and please give it every positive consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Any other citizens' comments for items on the agenda tonight? All right, lots of head nods saying that those were good comments already, so with that, citizens' comments are now closed. Nine unfinished business, there are none. So 10 new business, start with 10A, DELC 079387003417, Main Street, owner, City of Delafield, applicant Blake Thiessen, architecture, planning, applicant is requesting a site plan and appearance approval for the architectural design and materials of percent potential entertainment shelter at Liberty Park. We have a little group here, please, when you get a chance, and you're settled down, please introduce all yourselves and your addresses.
I'm Tom Hafner, City Administrator and Public Works Director for the City of Delafield, 500 Genesee Street, Delafield, Wisconsin.
Blake Tyson with Park Architecture and Planning, out of Madison, 762 Bearclaw Way, Madison.
John Reynolds, also with Park Architecture, 1603 Cypress Trail in Middleton, Wisconsin.
All right, thanks. Amy, if you wouldn't mind giving us a brief intro for this?
Sure. So, over the past couple of years, the Delafield Arts Foundation has been holding various events at Liberty Park. They've been using a temporary tent and have had some success. As a result, the city is interested in constructing a permanent stage structure with fundraising efforts and support from the Delafield Arts Foundation. They did hire the firm that's here tonight to help design that structure, and they would like feedback and your approval on the materials and architecture of the building before they move forward to consider getting that fundraising effort. Of course, the construction would be subject to them having the funding available to construct it. So, in the packet, you'll see, I'll go to the next page here, the site plan, this property, well, actually, I'll go back up, the Liberty Park and City Holdings covers quite a bit area along the Bark River. The, I put a blue circle in the general vicinity of where the stage would be located and where people would be standing in the grassy area. And then, the next diagram shows potential areas and sizes of the stage area. It is hugged against the north lot line in order to have as much space available for the public to come and visit as possible. However, the city has agreed to at least provide a 10-foot setback. There is no, it's zoned C1 conservancy, and there is no setback requirement, but the zoning district does allow park-type structures, so they would have at least a 10-foot setback. And then, Blake, I don't know if you could just explain a little bit about the size of the structure? So this diagram shows multiple sizes, and then there's also another plan that shows the general size, but it's my understanding that they will keep the stage structure pretty close to the size that is currently there with potentially like a 15% increase in the size, is that correct?
Yeah, so that first diagram that we're looking at, actually, if you can go back to the overlay, was intended as a size study initially. We wanted to understand what the temp stage is now, and what other stages in the region are, and so we put that sort of overlapping cake diagram to show the potential sizes that, and how it might fit for scale contextual in the site. So, we ended up expanding the footprint a little bit beyond what is currently used for the temporary stage. We assume and hope that your programs will grow. And so we felt it appropriate to provide a little bit of growth room in that stage. So it's, yeah, I think about 900 square feet or so of roof and about 1,800 square feet of concrete. So it's slightly bigger than that temp stage now. And I think that was what, 24 by 32, and we ended up at 35 by 40 or so, averaging that out.
Okay. And then the structure itself, and correct me if I have anything wrong, would sit on concrete, a concrete base with a metal frame. They would have a wood ceiling with a standing seam metal roof and stone masonry rear wall and the column piers would also be stone masonry. And then you can see they're proposing some metal work as a backdrop to the stage. The envision there is to work with either a local artist or a school to help them create that. And then one version also includes a portion of a solid wall. And I believe that, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, is in case there's some like naming rights or a title for the stage, it would be put on that type of wall structure. And then they, at this point, they're not proposing any additional landscaping. I do put in my report that the Plan Commission may want to consider whether or not that is or is not necessary based on the adjacent lands to the north. I'll go back to the site plan. Potentially transferring from the St. John's School to a residential type, high-density residential category. There is quite a bit of vegetation, depending on what angle you're looking at, going to the northwest and northeast, but there's a little center area that doesn't not have any. But they do want to keep the back area a little open to get equipment in and out and around and have storage and staging area for the people that are at the event. And then whenever this comes to fruition, if it does come to fruition, the engineering department would need to take a look at the overall area of impervious surface to determine if any stormwater or probably more likely erosion control permits, not stormwater, whether or not any of that is required. And then the only other statement is this area does have pretty high groundwater, so they may just want to do some sampling to make sure that those piers are in stable ground.
Yeah, just a comment on that last bit. Our intention is to elevate it above the existing grade, much like the existing stage. I think Jim had a measurement of 32 inches above existing grade to the temp stage. We would try to mimic that with a combination of tiered steps and building it up. So I think we would try and pull it out of that groundwater situation and certainly I think sample cores would be an appropriate next step.
And then just as a reminder, the Plan Commission does not review business plan of operations for city facilities, but you have the ability to review the site plan elements of it, the materials, design, architecture, site planning. And Mike, I don't know if you want to put the thank you? I'll just kind of scroll through in case you don't have it up on your screen, the various elevation images.
Maybe while you scroll, I'll supplement some narrative here. The-
You want me to go one?
No, you're good. You can just scroll through. So the backdrop is intended to provide a little bit of artistic expression. In the past, we've done things like this and worked with local artists, sometimes the high school shop class as a senior project, for example. It provides a backdrop for performers, so you don't feel like you're being intruded on from the rear. But we like the openness of it, so it allows air and light to move through, so it doesn't feel like you're up against a real solid plane. So it's a sort of a nice combination and it makes it feel much more inviting when it's not in use as a performance structure. This structure will function as a picnic shelter as well. So it felt a little bit more appropriate to have that rear wall broken up. John, any other thoughts or comments?
Just the materials being echoed from the St. John's facade, we're bringing that element into the structure as well. But otherwise, carry on with the imaging if you'd like.
One of the questions that I had was the use of the masonry. I appreciate the referencing St. John's properties. And I don't know what you would call this, fondue-like, whatever. Is it fondue-like? It's, it doesn't matter. I guess what was the consideration for the use of this versus fieldstone? The fish hatchery, which is right in front by the municipal parking lot, the bridge, the river walk, all of that has fieldstone. And that is where 80, I don't know what percentage, but it's a significant percentage of the patrons will approach from that end. And it just seems to me like a bit of a disconnect, but I get why you use this, but I guess, can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, it's a really good question. And we studied multiple material palettes as we were going through this, and that was one of the options that we did look at. Ultimately, we felt that with the backdrop of St. John's and the patrons looking with that perspective, it felt appropriate to have that material sort of blend with the backdrop. Not opposed to the fieldstone. I do think it is, there's a nice tie there with the riverfront and the hatchery, but that was why we ended up where we did.
Okay.
Yeah, overall, I like the design of what you have here. And the backdrop's either having it open or with that center section solid, both look good. You know, I think this would be a really nice addition for that area.
Thank you.
You know, it's not complicated, it's not overbearing, it blends in really nice, I think, for that area.
Great, thank you.
I don't know what the process is, but was there an expected painful going back and forth on what the design was looked like or is this just a proposal that you've made? I see heads nodding back and forth. This looks like something would be really painful. No, I want an arch. No, I want it flat. No, I want it.
Actually, it was very much an iterative process. Representing the city was Mark Schaefer, who's the Park and Rec Chairperson and an alderman, Jim Ryer, who's with the Delphill Arts Foundation, and then myself. So the three of us worked collaboratively with Blake and John. And I think Blake and John will tell you that throughout the process, they were getting pulled in this direction and pulled in that direction. And the result of what you see, I think, is a compromise of everybody involved that everybody was happy with.
I would not use the term painful. It was collaborative.
I feel better if it is painful.
Yeah, right, right. No, I mean, these processes are fun and I think everyone had really good ideas to bring to the table and I think the outcome reflected all that.
Having served on the Delphill Arts Foundation and grateful for that service, we've been talking about this for the last five, six years. And there have been many iterations of stages that have come and gone.
You running electrical to this?
Yes, this will definitely have a lot of power considerations, both for the van and for lighting and sound reinforcement.
Did somebody mention elevated to 32 inches? Is that what you said, Amy, or somebody?
So the temporary stage sits 32 inches above grade.
Okay.
So our thought was to try and mimic that, but we didn't want it to feel like it was just shooting out of the ground. So the thought is to blend in the ground around it. We would propose a few steps on the front. That both gives a little bit of a barrier from the patrons to the performers, but it also allows for some engagement between those two groups.
Yeah.
But we would also lift it and then blend in the grade around, so it didn't feel like a tower.
Because the renderings probably make it look more ground level than that 32 inches, right? Is that a fair, yeah? Because you want some sort of elevation.
Correct.
Yeah.
There's a wetland to the east, is there not? And that's not being displaced or impacted?
No, we are not touching that. That's actually, if you go back to the first diagram with the spatial analysis, it does show up in a gray dash line and it's off to the side to the east. Hard to see, but it's there.
Are you looking to incorporate any lighting on the inside?
Yes, I mean, that is a level of detail we're not quite there. But typically, when we do a structure like this, we will have sort of a baseline in-house light system up in the front beams, so that if I were to show up with a guitar, I don't have to bring an expensive light rig. There's something there to illuminate it. Most traveling groups will have their own sound and light reinforcement that would supplement that. But yes, we would suggest that you put in a baseline light, maybe four or five fixtures hidden above that first beam.
Okay.
And just so the Plan Commission knows, this project will come back before you. This is just a conceptual design that we're looking for. General approval of the general size, architecture, materials, but everything with regards to site planning, grading plan, lighting, landscaping, all of that stuff will come back before the Plan Commission for approval of final site plan and design.
I think it's beautiful. I think it's appropriate. My only hiccup is the masonry materials, especially if we're doing landscaping behind the unit, you're not going to be able to see the St. John's buildings. But it's great.
My concern is parking, because performers come usually with large trucks, a lot of equipment. Where are they going to park? Because they're not going to want to park long away and far away and haul stuff to the stage.
There's access from St. John's and so they drive right on the park and unload there.
That access from St. John's still needs to be formally, permanently secured from them.
Yeah. Parking area, though. They have to have a parking area for their trailers.
Correct.
Yeah, so where is that going to be? Have you discussed that?
So what it has been is behind the tent, and that's the intention here, too, is it would be behind the stage.
With the stage set up like it is with the decorative, you're going to see that, which I have a problem with, because I've never seen anything quite like this. Usually what I see is a solid wall, so that the sound projects towards the audience. With it like this, it's not going to do that. And you're going to see these trailers and trucks behind it.
So acoustically, the sound waves will travel. With the roof being pitched curved, it is projecting outward. We've done a lot of stages around the state and this is not atypical. I used to play on a lot of stages as a former musician, so I've certainly played on a lot of stages with open backs and those are uncomfortable. But we think that this, with a four-foot solid projection or solid plane on the bottom, we think that there will not be any issues with acoustics.
So from my chair, Laura, it sounds like you're contemplating, when Amy brought up landscaping, perhaps some sort of a natural barrier to disguise the fact that there would be service trucks. And I remember the kids from Wisconsin, when they performed, they had changing tents set up behind the stage. And they weren't really intrusive into the production, even though there's just a tent there. But you kind of see them. So I think that'd be something to consider with landscaping considerations in the future design, as far as how the, because this is not a major, this isn't four semis coming with, you know, flying drum sets. This is, you know, a limited amount of equipment that's going to be brought, but just a couple trucks and vans. You want some shielding.
Yeah, right.
So I think that that can be probably addressed in landscaping would be my guess.
Yeah.
So that would be a future consideration.
Yeah, so actually, to your point, it's valid. So I forgot to mention, if we have the stage elevation at 32, 36 inches above, that's three feet, and then we have that solid wall for the first four feet. So from ground behind the stage, you'll have a full seven foot of solid wall. So a vehicle, van, is going to be right at about that elevation. A big box truck would be taller, of course, but, yeah, we should have probably clarified, on the backside, you will have a full seven feet of vertical obstruction.
So you would have to have a pad back there for parking, right?
Right, if it's gravel or concrete or something, yeah.
Okay.
So the recommendation tonight would be to just approve the architectural design and materials of the proposed shelter improvements? And if you want, you could add for clarity that the remaining site plan elements shall be reviewed and approved by Plan Commission.
I'll move to approve the site plan and appearance and remaining plans can be approved by Plan Commission on DLC 0793987003.
Second.
Any discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Or abstentions? All right, I would say despite the lackluster response, we're very excited. Right? We've been talking about it for a while, so.
Thank you for the audience tonight.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, onto our next item. Item 10B, DLC 0798101, 103, 104, 105, 106. 524 Genesee Street. Owner: Bank One CO Industry Consulting Group, Inc. Applicant: Jim Farrell, HS General Contractors. Applicant is requiring site plan and appearance approval for construction of a dumpster enclosure. I believe that is only 100 feet away from where we're sitting.
That is correct.
All right. Name and address, please, sir.
Jim Farrell, W316 S7748, Lake Crest Drive, Maguannago, Wisconsin.
All right, Amy, you want to introduce this for us, please?
So this is the Chase Bank, just north of City Hall. You may have noticed that the bank made some nice facade improvements. They replaced the siding that was in bad repair, you know, put in some new sign fixtures at the, where you're going through the drive-through and have you. I just got an application there. They will be coming in to replace the freestanding sign. And as part of looking at the site, and it's been a request of the city for a while, at least discussions internally, that their dumpster is unenclosed and very visible when you're driving along Oneida Street. So we did send out a letter and requested that they enclose the dumpster. Jim immediately replied and said he was happy to do that. So he's proposing that dumpster enclosure that would be done in early in spring, because they need to put a concrete base down and it's getting a little late in the season. The dumpster enclosure would be 14 feet by 7 feet 14 inches and the enclosure will be 6 feet 8 inches tall. And then the enclosure will be made of a split face block painted tundra gray to match the existing facade of the building. And the gate will consist of a brown-treated cedar fence boards. Does that sound right?
Yes.
And then the posts will be galvanized steel and that'll be placed on the south end of the parking lot. And then as part of the project, they have a pretty dilapidated shed that they're going to remove. And once they remove that shed, they'll gain another parking spot, because it is sitting in an existing parking area.
We believe it's sitting in a parking area. It's been there for some time, but yeah, it will be a parking spot there, yeah, sitting on the asphalt. They haven't used that shed for 20 years.
So without questions, I would recommend approval of the dumpster enclosure. There is a request that the dumpster enclosure shall be constructed prior to June 15, 2025.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve. The dumpster enclosure is presented and that it will be constructed prior to June 15, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Okay, well, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
We look forward to the-
A lot easier than the first one, right?
There you go. You as well. All right, item 10C, DLC 078497100304 and DLC 078495. 111210, Highway 83. Owner: Elm Brook Church. Applicant: Michael Jones. Requesting feedback to schedule a public hearing for Conditional Use Amendment, Site Plan, and Appearance Approval to allow construction of an outdoor playground. Would you please introduce yourself?
I'm sorry?
Please, name and address, please.
You just turned it off.
You just turned it off.
There you go.
Michael Jones, West 382, South 5120, County Rose, ZC, Dulce, Wisconsin.
All right, thank you. Amy, you want to introduce this?
Sure. So Elm Brook Church operates as a CU for a church and school, which we've had a couple of requests in the last few years. The applicant is proposing feedback tonight regarding a proposed outdoor playground. And if they have the required information, then they would ask to schedule a public hearing for the January Plan Commission meeting. So the CU amendment would be required. The playground area is proposed in the south, in the, here, I'm going to go back to this map, it's a little bit easier, in the grassy area south of the building, just east of the parking lot. And the parking ground area would be about, the mulched area would be about 7,000 square feet, so it's not a super small space. They did submit in a bunch of images of what that playground equipment would look like. And then just to understand the neighborhood impacts, the- to understand the neighborhood impacts, the, um, playground is, is located approximately three-hundred-and-fifty feet from the nearest residential lot line and about four-hundred-and-fifty feet from the nearest home. And those homes would be located northeast of the church area. And they are approximately ten to twelve feet higher in elevation. So they're probably not really getting, um, a visual of, of this area. And then there is a tree line on the east lot line, um, that is, um, in the back of adjacent residential properties as well. So there is some vegetative screening that, that exists. And then there's, um, a residential neighborhood on the west side of eighty-three, um, that's located about seven-hundred-and-fifteen feet, um, from the proposed playground. And then the golf course is immediately east. So the, um, engineering staff has reviewed the plans, um, and they'll just, and they've determined that no stormwater or erosion control is necessary because of the placement of mulch, not a concrete pad or disturbance of the ground. The only thing I did, uh, look into it when I was preparing for this meeting is that they did recently come to, uh, Plan Commission and Council for Approval of a Conditional Use in twenty-twenty-two for a temporary tent to facilitate summer camp, um, that, some different summer camps. And that temporary tent location was in the same area where the playground equipment is proposed. So I would just ask, you have until January first before we would, um, move forward to schedule the public hearing for the January meeting. If they want to incorporate a revised tent area for the summer camp, they could do that as part of this application. But we would need to know and have that information by, by January first.
Okay. I'll forward that information to the administrator.
And I can, I'll send you this, um, report yet this week.
Okay.
Other than that, I would just, you know, ask for your feedback and to schedule the hearing for January.
Do the kids currently play in this area? When they, do the kids currently play in the existing area?
They currently play in that grassy area.
Okay. Have you had any complaints?
I'm sorry?
Have you had any complaints?
No.
Okay.
Amy, why do they need a, uh, why do they need to get a conditional use? Because of the permit today is very limited to-
Yes. So, um, it's a, I believe it, what is it zoned? Oh, it's zoned P I. Um, all churches require a conditional use permit. So, um, or P one, I should say. So then any site changes that occur do require an amendment to that conditional use. And it is an increase in outdoor usage. So, um, they do need to come forward. Now, that summer camp area, when they got approval in twenty-twenty-two, they were able to make some modifications, um, to the tent size, I think it was, um, and the events themselves. But there's no mention of amending the area where the tent exists.
Is there an increased use in, um, a, a, increased number of kids that'll be using this than is currently? Like, are you expanding?
Increase?
Yes. Are you expanding programs? Are there going to be a hundred kids there instead of fifty that were typically there?
The playground is designed to facilitate at least a hundred kids. There's a two-to-five-year-old area. There's a five-to-twelve-year-old area. So we had it specked and designed for up to a hundred kids. But there's no increase in use plan. We, we don't have a playground for the church at all.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
I think, and I also think the source of bad language from the, from the tee box near there has gone down since the tree was lost about twelve years ago on that fairway to, to the east.
Oh, the fairway. Oh, the golfers. Okay. I thought you were starting to imply the kids had bad language. Using the Lord's name in vain.
I think so. I think so.
I'll, um, oh, we need to schedule a public hearing? I'll move to schedule a public hearing for, uh, item ten C.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Or abstentions? Okay. Thanks. We'll see you in January.
Thanks.
All right. Moving right along. Um, uh, item ten D, D E L C zero-seven-eight-one-six-seven-zero-zero-four-three-three-three, North Lappam Peak Road. Owner, American Legion Post, number one-ninety-six. Applicant, Terry Frazier, requesting feedback to schedule a public hearing for Conditional Use Amendment, Site Plan, Appearance and Approval to Allow the Construction of a twelve-hundred-and-ninety-six square foot storage building. Is the applicant here tonight? Representative at least. Please come up. Amy Walsh. Uh, actually, please introduce yourself with your name and address. Just press the bottom bar and the green, there you go.
My name's Jennifer McCarthy. By address, H twenty-eight Dante Drive, Oconomowoc.
All right. Amy.
Okay. So the Legion also operates as a conditional use. This property is owned, R three residential, um, and they do have a conditional use. Um, so any, again, any site plan changes do require an amendment to that conditional use. And the applicant is proposing to remove, um, if you look at the screen, the two, not the, not the large structure that's part of the baseball diamond, but the two accessory structures along the north property line, just north and west of the, the parking lot area. Um, so they'll, they'll remove those two buildings and build one new, larger building to store, um, quite a bit of equipment. And some of that equipment is, my understanding, is stored outside, some of it's inside. And now they'll be able to get it all, um, inside. So the new building would be twelve-hundred-and-ninety-six square feet. Um, it does meet the height requirements with the eleven-foot side walls at a total height of seventeen feet and four inches. The building will be located sixteen feet from the lot line, which is the requirement of the district. In the, um, semi-public conditional use, which they are part of, if they had a semi-public use, they have to double the offset requirements. But since this building is used for storage, um, it would be my interpretation, they don't have to meet that requirement. And then, um, the, the building itself will also match the newly remodeled main building. So they'll have vinyl siding in the same color, sandstone, as the main building. And then the roof will consist of steel panels, um, in midnight gray. And then the fascia gutters, overhead doors, man doors will, um, all be white. And I'll go through the, um, elevations here. So the elevation that you're looking at on the one screen with the one overhead door and one mandor is facing Lappam Peak, right? That's facing the road. And then the, um, the elevation that shows the three windows is facing the park, uh, the Legion property. And then the, um, overhead door and two mandors would be facing west. And then the, um, elevation that faces north doesn't have any windows, correct?
Correct.
So I did, um, visit the property to just see if there was any landscaping. Jennifer did tell me that their, that Delafield Parkway recently put landscaping in. Um, so there's some pictures in the packet that show that they did indeed plant evergreens along the whole lot line. So they're, you know, they're pretty, actually pretty substantial as planted, but they will grow quite a bit. Um, so one consideration would be to require additional landscaping if you felt it was necessary, but just understand there might actually, that might result in overcrowding of plants. Um, I did have a conversation with the developer of Delafield Parkway today and he just asked that when this goes forward for approval next month, that there be a condition about outdoor storage, that they don't then store material on that north lot line, um, or outside adjacent to the building. You, so we've been talking about accessory structures in the residential districts. They're limited to twelve-hundred square feet. Um, if you're, if the property is, um, less than a certain acreage, they actually exceed that. So they could get Plan Commission approval for exceeding twelve-hundred square feet. But in this case, the property is not used for residential purposes. It's part of a conditional use. Um, and that, that, that code section is intended to be for residential properties. So I listed in here, um, the items Plan Commission should be considering. I would say the, probably the most relevant one is compatibility with the, the surrounding environment and, and not impacting the adjacent neighborhood. And, um, they did not, so you, my understanding is you're not proposing any of your own landscaping or, and there will not be any exterior lighting, correct?
We're not proposing at this time any landscaping. And we didn't plan for lighting, but it was just discussed today that we could put lighting at the peak to overlook the parking lot and light up the parking lot from the peak of the building. But that would be future.
Okay. If you propose any exterior lighting, especially if it's intended to, um, illuminate the parking lot, we would need a lighting plan with photometrics to make sure that it doesn't impact the neighboring properties. Um, and then it's my understanding that, that parking lot's kind of in, um, poor condition, that it's their intent to also repave the parking lot this next, or soon.
Correct.
We'll say. Um, and then engineering staff, they don't believe they will require any kind of, um, engineering at this time, but there have been a lot of improvements made over time on this property. And so they, um, are reviewing the application to collect data and document where they're at with impervious surfaces for future improvements. So with that, I would just ask for feedback and to schedule a public hearing for the January, um, Plan Commission meeting.
I have a question. Is this building going to have a concrete floor?
I think they have to. Does, will it?
Well, um, our plan is because of the construction of it, it's called post-frame. So it rests just on the concrete perimeter, concrete along its perimeter. Um, often with these kind of buildings, they do put a concrete floor on it. But there is another product, um, that we were looking to use that's about a third of the cost of the concrete. Um, it's called a, it's called a grid. And you fill it with, um, you have a, a bottom layer to it, um, that's like small rock. And then you lay this grid on there and you fill it with stone. And it creates the kind of surface that you would have in a parking lot or in a floor. It's-
Have you talked to, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Have you talked to Scott at all about that, just to make sure it's acceptable? Okay. You'll want to just talk to Scott. I, I don't know how the building code reads. Um, it may require a concrete floor. It may not.
Otherwise, it's like a pole building. Now to that, if you have any kind of gasoline engines kept, kept in it, they prefer a concrete floor.
On the one, you want, I just want to explain, there's a six-foot section running a length of the building.
Our original design, um, before we needed to change to horizontal siding, we had a overhang and a six-foot sidewalk that led to the back of the building where that other, where the two mandors are and the garage door. Um, when we changed our design, we removed that six-foot overhead and the sidewalk, but we just didn't update our drawings for the, um, commission.
Yeah. So that, that portion's going to be gone, but they should update the plan for the actual public hearing application. So we'll, we'll get that corrected. And it, if you could move the whole building to actually rest on the south end of where that six-foot overhang would be, that would be even better, just to get a little bit further off the lot line. But, um, I'm not sure that that's required.
So for aesthetic purposes and just for more of a barrier, that would be your preference? I mean, it doesn't bother us at all.
Okay.
I, I think the building looks nice and it, it'll be a, a pleasant change from the two buildings that are there. So.
Yeah, that's my point. I think it cleans things up to get rid of those two buildings and put one in. And I like all the pine trees that'll be behind it. So I'm good with it.
Presume you don't have a problem with making sure that everything's stored inside as the developer to the north had asked?
Especially since it's important to, um, the developer and the commission. I will make, um, that a priority. It looks terrible right now.
Okay. Motion to schedule a public hearing for the January twenty-ninth Plan Commission meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Or abstentions? Okay. We'll see you in January.
All right. Thank you.
Awesome. Okay. Item ten E, D E L C zero-seven-nine-two-one-three-seven-fourteen-oh-six, Oak Crest Court. Owner, applicant, John and Diane Gruber. Site plan and appearance review to allow construction retaining wall and accommodate an in-ground pool. Okay. Please introduce yourself. Name and address, please.
Yeah. John Gruber, uh, North fifteen, uh, West three-oh-one-six-two, Timberbrook Court, town of Delafield. Currently, they were building this house in St. John's Estates.
Nice.
Evan Casper, one-eleven, Birch Road, Delafield.
Okay. Amy.
Okay. So this property is in St. John's Estates at, um, a butts, well, I shouldn't say the property a butts, but it faces Oakwood Drive. There is some open space between the property, um, and the road, and it's off of the, um, first cul-de-sac to the west. So the applicant, the, the home and, um, the home and attached garage are under construction right now. The applicant has a permit for a pool or is proposing to, do you have the permit for the pool already? Or no, you're proposing to get approval for the pool? Um, and as part of that, it'll include a patio surround. Um, and that patio surround would be on a five-foot tall, uh, retaining wall, um, with the required fence above it. So, um, we had one of these recently. This, however, this fence would be more than fifty percent open. Um, but the, because the wall exceeds three feet in height, they need Plan Commission approval. Um, the wall otherwise meets the, the setbacks and offsets. It's required to be five feet from the lot lines. And it'll be more than, um, nine feet from the west lot line and eleven feet from the nor, uh, north lot line. I didn't have a scaled plan to measure it, but, um, I, I made some comfortable assumptions. Um, and then the, I did ask the applicant if they could tier the retaining wall to just reduce the overall height. Um, and they do have some complications with that because there is a utility easement, um, that extends on the property ten feet on the north side. And then that has an effect on what they can do, um, on the west side as well. So with the retaining wall specifically, Plan Commission's responsible for determining whether or not the wall is structurally sound in materials, form and color, and does not have an adverse impact on the property values in the neighborhood. Um, there are several pictures of the, um, site and surroundings in the packet. Um, the retaining wall itself will, um, consist of a modular block wall. So those are typically pretty structurally sound. And we, because of the height, we will need engineer approval of the construction of the walls. They're putting a whole bunch of drain, um, tile in to, to assist with drainage. Um, I don't know if you chose, have you chosen a color yet?
Not yet.
Okay. So they're, the, the-
I think we're, we're more towards the brown.
Yeah. It would either be timeless in there or graphite. If you look a couple photos forward, you'll see the color of the siding of the, of the house.
Yes. Okay.
Pretty dark.
Yeah. It's gray and brown, basically.
This is-
Yeah, that's it. That's the backside there. That's where the pool would be.
So you can see how the property, um, drops off from the house and they're essentially trying to get that, you know, pretty close to the, the patio door elevation and extend it out to the length of the, the patio area.
Yeah. We bought the house. We didn't know all these elevation changes would be that way, but.
Usually buy a exposed basement to walk out, to swim out, right?
Right. Yeah. But, uh, we really didn't want the, that lot only had small exposure. You can see it on that end there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. The biggest thing for us also is just when you walk out of the house, we didn't want to have to go down multiple steps to get to the pool also and things of that nature. So that's why we tried to come up with a design plan with Evan. Just something that you just come out of the house, it's there. The walls are terraced nicely. We put nice landscaping in because I want, you know, we wanted to look night, the aesthetics. But, uh, it's probably a little bit different.
And then, Mike, if you can put the packet on the screen. And then they're going to have LED lights in the walls, but those are facing you in the pool area, not, not facing the neighbors. Um, but you can see this, there's an image on the screen that's not the subject property. They won't be dropping down to the patio like this image shows, but it gives you an idea of, of how that wall pool will look. Um, so tho- those are the retaining walls. Then the, the fence itself, um, also needs approval because it'll be located within the setback. So there's a twenty-foot setback from the lot lines. They'll be about, um, they'll be more than ten feet. Um, we'll need to get a scaled survey to get exact measurements. Um, and then the fence is technically measured. It's a four-foot tall fence, but on top of the retaining wall, that overall height is more like nine feet. So, um, the, the height is also something that needs to be measured or, um, reviewed and approved. And the fence will consist of aluminum. And again, we talked about how it'll be fifty percent open. So, um, with retaining walls, if they're within the offset area, which, which they're not, um, they have to demonstrate the grades are better controlled by the wall, but that's not an issue. Um, they're also not within the road setback area. Um, but plans showing that the retaining wall will be structurally sound and so constructed that it'll properly contain and support the ground and pavement, walks and other nearby structures is required. That's where we'll need engineer approval. That's where we'll need engineer approval. And the location and height shall be harmonious with the principal structure and consistent with the legislative purpose here of, of that, of that section of the code. And then the, the fencing, the idea is to promote public health, safety, morals, comfort and general welfare of the citizens and enhance the values of the property throughout the city and avoid and prevent deterioration of the general appearance of building structures, landscaping, open areas, encourage and promote efficient use of land, encourage and promote acceptability, attractiveness, cohesiveness and compatibility with new buildings, development, remodeling and additions, and to preserve and protect the appearance and aesthetic quality of the city. The engineer did review the grading plan. So there's a revised grading plan and original grading plan in here. The original plan had a lot, or a swale on the subject property. The engineer asked that that be relocated to be on the lot line so that the, the two neighbors don't have two swales. They'd rather see one unified swale. However, because they're grading over the lot line, we would ask to get the approval of the neighbor. And then the applicant also did agree to put some plantings at the base of the retaining wall on the north and west sides to help screen it. I guess one thing is we don't have the actual landscaping plan of what's going to be planted. So I would say, you know, Plan Commission should determine whether or not you want that to come back here or if you want staff to review and approve it. So if you approve this, we want written documentation that the homeowners' association has approved the wall. I did get an email from the applicant, from the aspire, the builder who's developing in conjunction with George Irwin. And then written documentation from the adjacent neighbor regarding the swale grading. And then the retaining wall design being reviewed and approved by the engineering department to ensure stability and constructed so that it can properly contain and support the ground and pool patio area. And then the grading plan needs to be submitted and reviewed and approved by the engineering department to ensure that it substantially complies with the master grading plan of St. John's and that the improvements and related grading do not cause adverse drainage on adjacent properties. They did look at it, there are some comments that, that need to be addressed, but should be able to be addressed with some minor modifications.
I'll ask first question. Do you have any objections to the four recommendations from our city planner as far as the swales and the community, I mean, the communication with the neighbors and the landscaping? Okay, all right. We're, we're doing our best, knowing that they're not built yet, but.
Right.
We like to facilitate as best we can.
Yeah.
Something to avoid conflict, which I don't think this is a big deal, so anyway, that's, that's the purpose of all that.
Understand.
All right. So any other comments or questions for the applicant?
No, I think it's very nice looking.
Thank you. Look forward to swimming in it.
Yeah.
There is no landscaping plan, as Amy said. But referencing that landscaping would be placed on the north and west property lines, what about the two adjacent properties to the eastish where your property abuts their backyard? Are there plans to put landscaping there?
Yeah, so they'll, they'll be full, like foundational plantings, just with it being a new construction home. There'll be some probably privacy plantings in that northeast corner, because the, so the.
That one house really faces towards us.
Yeah, they're in, I think it's in the pictures, if you scroll through the pictures, but they're like covered patio, basically faces towards John's property. But it would be.
Right there.
Yeah, so, but not, they would never see the wall from their side.
Yeah, and I failed to mention that, the way the grades work, that lot is high enough where like they're more level with the top of the wall. Where on the other side, they're going to be looking at the whole wall.
Yeah, we'd want some kind of plantings for, I guess, a little bit of privacy. I don't think anybody wants to see me in a pool, so.
Well, time will tell.
What type of landscaping are you planning on putting in?
By the wall or just?
Everywhere, in the back, in the, yeah, in this, for this retaining wall.
For the retaining wall, the screen it will have more substantial, like five to six-foot tall shrubs or evergreens to screen on both sides and then kind of terrace it down in mind, though the property hasn't been developed yet to the west. But they'll be the biggest impacted from the retaining wall seeing it.
Sure.
The roadside or oak wood on the north side, with it being a new development, there's evergreen trees and new trees that in time will.
That they planted already.
But I would still plan on doing probably, just because we're up against that utility easement. But I left enough space, like two to three feet to still get, I was thinking more like ornamental grasses. That would be in more of the four or five-foot tall range to soften it and help screen it from the oak wood side.
From the oak wood?
Yeah.
Okay, and what's substantial in your, what is, you said a substantial number? What is a substantial number of trees on the west side?
On the west side, so.
My substantial might not be your substantial.
Correct.
That's the only reason I ask.
Yeah, so it wouldn't be like overly planted, but it would be appropriately planted where, you know, if the plant spacing called for four to five feet, we'd make sure that it's four to five feet by time it reached maturity that it intertwines.
Okay.
So when first planted, it may not get full coverage, but within time, just to have it appropriately placed.
Thank you.
I'll motion to approve the plan and retaining wall, the plans for the retaining wall and pool as presented this evening. Subject with you satisfying the following conditions. Number one, written documentation should be provided that the homeowners' association approves the wall and fence as presented. Two, written documentation shall be provided from the adjacent property owner to the west. Granting approval of the lot line swell if grading extends beyond the lot line. Three, a retaining wall design shall be submitted to the City of Delafield Engineering Department for review and approval to ensure the wall that exceeds three feet in height is structurally sound and constructed, constructed so that it will properly contain and support the ground and patio pool area. Four, the grading plan shall be submitted to the City of Delafield Engineering Department to ensure that the plan substantially complies with the master grading plan for St. John's Estates and that the proposed improvements and related grading do not cause adverse drainage on adjacent properties. And five, that a landscape plan is submitted for staff review and approval.
And I'll second.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, shouldn't the beginning of the motion say retaining wall and fence, not pool?
I guess I, I was, sure.
I thought that's what you meant, but I wasn't sure.
When I said pool plans and wall, I was trying to incorporate, no, that's fine, Mike, sure. The fence and retaining wall.
Fence and retain, okay.
Approved upon satisfying those conditions.
Mike.
And I'm, I'm good with that.
Ed, second. Yep. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? All right, very good. I'll just say, you know, there's a lot of hungry deer around there, so make sure you plant the right things appropriately. But if you want to plant some scrap stuff for.
No.
Decoys for Matt and I's property, because we live really close to there. Draw them away from ours, because they're eating all our stuff, so. All right, good luck. Welcome to the neighborhood. All right, item, are we on item 10F? Yes, we are. D E L C 0798075 and D E L C 0798066002. 805 Wells Street, owner Baller Group, 2 LLC, you'll have to explain the name. And then applicant Tyler Foster, Ware Design. Applicant requesting feedback and schedule a public hearing for conditional use, site plan and appearance review for the allowance of a development of a six-unit multifamily condominium development. Name and address, please, sir.
Can I turn your mic?
You need to press the bottom bar, there you go.
Dan Eckerman with Ware Design Build, W227 S6550, Isabella Court, Waukesha. Tyler Foster is out sick today, so I'm taking over for him.
All right, so Amy, give us an intro.
So Mike's got the property area on the screen. This property is between Lake Street and Leaker Street, north of Wells Street. There's actually two, there's two tax key numbers, but it's for legal lots of record. The applicant's proposing to combine all of those lots. They would tear down the building which currently has a radon business in it. And they are proposing to build three buildings which would consist of six units. So each building would have two residential units in it as part of a condominium-style development. The property is zone CBD 2, so, and it, but it is outside of the downtown design district area. So multifamily does require a conditional use. It's not a planned unit development, it's a, it's a conditional use for multifamily. So as they move forward for the conditional use, this is a concept presentation. I don't know that they'll be ready next month for.
We should be.
Okay, so you, you could schedule a public hearing, I would schedule it based on them submitting certain elements, which we'll get to. We will want a condominium plat as part of that. The city doesn't review condominium plats for the purpose of the condominium laws, but we review it for compliance with your like CU standards and site plan elements. So we'll take a look at that. The structures will comply with the CBD 2 setbacks, offsets, floor ratio requirements. There's no exceptions being proposed. There are no open space limitations. Each unit will have a two-car attached garage and then they are proposing, let me go to a site plan here. Here we go. Two-car attached garage and then they're also proposing guest parking outside with two parking stalls per unit. The fire department did review the radius turns at the entrance site and they did accept it. The engineering department does want to see those radiuses getting to all areas of the property. So just needing a little more information. The drive aisles are also 20 feet wide. And looking at the code closely, you may have to have a 24-foot wide aisle.
Okay.
So single and two-family houses can be 20 feet wide, but this is an overall development with six units. So we'll have the engineering department review it and then this will need to go to Public Works. So Public Works can also take a closer look at that too. And then if you look at the, the architectural pages of the packet, each of the three buildings are similar. They're slightly different, but they do have the same type of materials. And there is some variety in the, in the type of facade material. So each of the buildings will have three types of siding types, including wood tone composite siding, which is going to have that appearance of wood in a cherry-type color. And then there'll be smart side vertical siding and vintage pewter and smart side panel siding and vintage pewter. And then there will also be stone accents in country graphite. And then the trimpa, tranfascia columns and gutter will all be black. And the saw fits would be vintage pewter. And then windows and garage doors would also be black. And the front doors will be like a raven-type color. And the roof is also black and consists of clad. So that's the architectural pieces of it. Each of the units will be about 2,000 square feet. They'll either have two to three bedrooms with an office area. And then I already mentioned the two-car attached garage. The engineering department does need full civil plans in order to determine whether or not there are any drainage issues. They'll have to review the grading plan. There is a little, some grade changes. And then determine what kind of stormwater erosion control is required. There's quite a bit of impervious surface now, but there, it looks like there might be a calculation that needs to be corrected. So they'll have to review that and determine whether or not any additional permits are required. And then as part of this, they did submit a certified survey map and that could be reviewed tonight to go to common council at the next meeting. If the project fell apart for some reason, they just wouldn't record the CSM. But the CSM is intended to combine all of these lots into one. There's just a few conditions from the surveyor, I did not have any additional conditions. The CSM review, which it would be a separate motion, would be subject to all of the conditions being met before it goes to common council. And then just with the site plan elements, some considerations would be, we would want to look at the condominium plat. And then all condominium plats do require declaration of restrictions, so they would need to submit those for review and approval as part of the CU for multifamily. The future plans will need to include the exterior lighting, landscaping, if there's any signage and grading plan with those impervious surface calculations. And then if any stormwater management erosion control is required, we would need to review that. There is a recreational trail in the sou, on the south side of Wells Street. So consideration should be given as to whether or not a trail should also be on the north street or side or whether or not a trail should, a connection should be made from the development to the south side trail. We would recommend that that go to Public Works Committee for a recommendation. And then Public Works Committee should also consider whether or not there should be additional access point off of Lake Street. So if we go back to just the GIS image, right now, there, there must be a, a loading area off of Lake Street that, that goes into the site.
Significant change in elevation back on that side too.
Yes, there is, it is, that loading area is stable through, with the construction of a retaining wall. Right now, they do have one point, they do have, they're showing a potential extension to the north. It's a, provides a turnaround for emergency vehicles and people parking, but it could also, it's someday in the future, turn into an extension if anything were to be developed on those north lots. So they do have that. So with that being said, I would recommend that you provide feedback and schedule a public hearing for such time the pending plans are submitted, including the lighting, landscaping, signage, grading, impervious surface, stormwater management, and that the plans should go to Public Works Committee for consideration of the access points, trail connections and stormwater management.
I'll, I'll add one thing. Usually good for two, but they, the group did come to, come to plan, a plan staff meeting earlier this year, maybe August. I forget when. But we recommended that their initial, with their initial kind of sketch design and stuff, that they look around the neighborhood and see what the architecture might fit in. And it looks like they took a lot of examples from Clearview, the new, you know, that building. And it's a real smart building, kind of. And anyways, I appreciate the fact that that feedback was taken, just, just to give you that.
Thank you.
As feedback, because it's, it's a smart-looking building, design anyways.
Game rooms and billiard rooms are big. I mean, I'm looking at the floor plan, it's like, wow.
Yep, we drop on the floor in every unit, so potential golf simulator, if people want to buy it and put one in there. It's hot right now.
If you could also, as part of the public hearing, bring in a live material aboard.
I've got it done, I didn't bring it tonight because I didn't think it, I'd rather wow you with it at the public hearing.
Yeah, I agree, overall, they're nice-looking structures.
Good, thank you.
Propose there. Nice variety of materials on the outside.
I'll take a different approach. I, I don't feel that vibe in the City of Delafield. Modernist, the contemporary look. I feel like we went through this with the two Hendricks buildings when we first saw those. They were very much like this, but that's my opinion.
And that's exactly what we're trying to do, is make it different, so it's not like everything else. And we still took, took the direction from the staff of making it look like that building.
I understand.
Yep.
It's why there's a public hearing, for sure, right?
I'm kind of with you, Dan, that like, it does look very modern and that's what I thought in that area, because that's, that's by the garden, right?
Yeah. Yes.
Just like, that didn't.
My first take was it kind of looked like office buildings to me.
But like you said, that's why there's a public hearing, because we're just two people.
Right.
We've, we've met with, with Joanne over at the garden, she is 100% in, in support of it. In fact, she was coming tonight, but her son's in town.
Okay, she liked the design?
Yep. 100%.
Does her son hate it, so she kept her away? So does her son not like it, so she's like, no, you can't talk in favor of it?
I'll agree with the Dan's.
I think there's a house right next to the garden place that's very modern. It's relatively new.
Okay.
Yeah. It's kind of the theme of things today, very modern.
We tried to use, like, the materials on the building that aren't real modern, there's not a lot of metal or anything out there, we're trying to tone it down and just have a, a different elevation look with the, with the roofs and things.
It would help to have the material.
Yeah.
Maybe some pictures of, like.
We are having professional renderings done of that it will make it look like it's a photograph, so we'll have all of that for the Plan Commission meeting, for the public hearing, I should say.
Might be good to have some ideas to other comparable properties or something, think of a house on Milwaukee Street that reminds me of the architecture, I like contemporary architecture, but I agree with the concern about, you know, at some point, if you're across the street and you're, you know, completely different, you know, you'll get people who will object to it, so it's like, from a different perspective, it can fit in, I personally like the way it looks, but again, how it fits in is so important.
Right. I've been doing this a long time, you can't make everybody happy.
Oh, no.
Totally understand.
That's true. We've been living it. How far away is Clearview from this property?
Block and a half.
Yeah.
Good block.
Yeah, it's 150 yards to this north.
Yep.
At least, 200 yards to the north.
So ways.
I mean, I'm, architectural elements of this are showing up all over the place, like, I think, Mike, you mentioned one on Milwaukee Street that kind of redid it, there's one in Oakwood by my house, it's a little ranch where they just updated something with this dark wood and the dark, I don't know, there's, there's trends, but, you know, elevations in the, elevations you can't, like, the rooftops and angles you can't change, so.
I'm seeing a lot of it, too, because I get around to subdivisions and that, and around the lakes, and there's a new house over by, near Okachi Lake, that has these slanted roofs like this.
How's it look?
Okay, but it's black, everything's black.
Thinking if that's the one we built, we just put one on Okachi Lake, it's up on a.
Well, this borders the Frontage Road.
Oh, that's not it.
Yeah. But it's completely black, and I'm like.
It would really, it would really help to show, like, in context with, like you said, and kind of an as-built look.
Yep, exactly.
That would help a lot.
Yeah, I don't think our renderings look very good with the software we've got, so.
Yeah, okay. Well, I think I'll try this, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for such time pending plans are submitted, exterior, including exterior lighting, landscaping, signage, grading plan with impervious surfaces, calculations, and possible stormwater management and erosion controls. Development plan should be sent to the Public Works Committee for consideration of access points, trail connections, and stormwater management.
And I would just say, Dan, if there's any way that, sorry, I should probably wait, right?
What's that?
Just a second, I was just going to say, if there's any way you can clean up the impervious, pervious surface calculations, I think the engineering.
That's all in the works, Mark Alena with Alena Engineering is working on it, we turned the loops on it.
Because then I think.
Got the comments back.
If, then if our engineering department can review that, it might be a good idea to go to Public Works right away in the beginning of January, then we'll know about any trail connection or access to Lake Street recommendations as part of the public hearing.
Okay, all right, so again to the motion, you were right, Amy.
Yes, sorry.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
All right, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Okay, that motion is passed.
Thank you, do you guys want to look at the CSM?
We're thinking about it, it's next on the list, so 10G.
You have to wait.
Applicant is requesting approval of certified service, survey map to combine several legal lots of record. So Amy, explain, explain this.
So I have the CSM on the screen, I really don't have that much to add, they're combining the four legal lots, these will all be on one lot, the, the development and who owns what and how that all works will be part of the condominium piece of it, surveyor reviewed it, has a couple of very minor corrections that should be made as part of submittal to common council.
So I have a quick question for Amy, so I, I believe that they're doing this to sync up the timelines, so that this, there's no delay, and if everything goes along synchronous approval, but should something go awry with their condo approval process, does, does this throw any hitches in them as far as combining the lots anyways?
No, so there's a couple of things, it really doesn't slow down the process, because the conditional use has to go to Plan Commission and Common Council also, so they could wait, but because they did submit an actual certified survey map, we're held to a deadline, and so we want to keep it moving unless the developer gives us an extension, but if they didn't move forward, they just wouldn't record it, and those lots would stay as they are.
Yep, Amy's 100% right.
All right.
It's not a real harm.
That's the question, I just wanted to know if, that you were going down a path where if something went south on approval of the project, that you'd be stuck, but you can pull the strings on that, okay?
Well, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the CSM, provided the planner, engineer, and surveyor comments are addressed prior to the final CSM being presented to Common Council for review and approval.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Okay, that is approved, thanks.
Thank you very much.
See you hopefully in a month. Okay, item 11, wait, yes, item 11, comprehensive plan zoning and ordinance revision, 11A, discussion action requested, request initiated by Plan Commission to amend the text of Chapter 52 zoning ordinance municipal code provisions result, related to adult-oriented establishments and tobacco shops, so Amy, quick overview on this.
Okay, so, kind of went over it during the public hearing, but the public hearing is really related to making the cross-reference in those zoning district sections, right now it just says tobacco shops in their list, it's listed as one of the permitted uses, so I would add, such shops must conform to the provisions of Section 10-2 related to cigarette licenses, and if the city attorney's okay with it, I would add cigarette license, cigarette, electronic vaping devices, and tobacco product retailer licenses. And then, the, that way, if somebody comes in and talks to me, I know to look at a whole nother chapter, which actually has the, the provisions in it, that language is very similar to adult-oriented establishments, it refers to Chapter 10. So that's it for Chapter 52 zoning, and then Chapter 10 would just go to council, really, you can make a recommendation if you would like regarding adding those provisions related to being the certain distance from the various uses, and for tobacco shops, the definition for when that applies is, so the way, the way I have it written is, in order to protect public health, safety, and welfare by avoiding the proliferation of tobacco and electronic vaping device retail establishments, I think I have a typo here, but any comma, any tobacco or electronic vaping device retailers in which 10% or more of the gross public floor area or 10% of stock and trade consists of cigarettes, tobacco products, or electronic vaping products, shall be located at least 1,500 feet from another cigarette, tobacco product, or electronic vaping product retailer of any size, and at least 1,000 feet from any of the following uses. The provision does not apply to tobacco bars as defined in Wisconsin statutes 101, 123, so tobacco bars have their own definition, and that would be like the cigar bar on 83 and 94, so that, these provisions wouldn't apply to them. But the distances are any land zoned or used for residential purposes, any historic sites on the National Register, any public or private elementary or secondary school, or nursery school, or daycare, a church, or established place of worship, a public park or parkway. So, there's a few little typos in there, but we'll, we would clean it up and draft an ordinance for common council for Chapter 10. Then the adult-oriented establishments, that's a much longer section if you look at it, so Michael and I, the city attorney, did go through several of these, we took out, you'll see, we struck out sections, they're all related to, like, timelines, putting limitations on the city for getting things accomplished, we took that out. And then, added the 1,500 feet from any other adult establishment, and the minimum 900 feet from the following, and it's the same list, and then just a reminder that no license shall be issued without that conditional use, in compliance with the conditional use section. And again, this language was generally pulled from other communities.
So we're not going out of line, or this isn't some kind of an extreme thing, there's precedent out here for this, or?
No, and I believe, like, the tobacco shop issue is becoming a, a more and more frequent conversation in communities, once they start seeing several of them next to each other.
Yeah, there's flat-out moratoriums in some communities, like Milwaukee was one, and their, their restrictions are more onerous than ours that we're proposing, just because they're, whatever, showing up in every corner, and we're just looking to, there's enough places to poison yourself, I think, anyways, that's.
Exactly.
So if, you know, feel free to mention any concerns or comments, otherwise, the idea here would be to make a recommendation to, that common council approve the proposed text amendments to Chapter 52 and 10 presented tonight, and that the attorney, city attorney shall be consulted regarding any necessary adjustments, and staff is directed to draft an ordinance for common council consideration that is reflective of the text amendments presented at the December 18th Plan Commission meeting, and any attorney comments.
Could you explain to me the logic behind the 1,500 feet from another adult establishment, and only 900 feet from a residential?
So the, the 1,500 and 1,000 feet is pulled from other communities, adult establishments per statute and case law, you have to, you have to allow them somewhere in your community, and when I use the 1,000-foot measure, it was eliminating all adult establishments, so reducing it to 900 square foot provided the opportunity on a couple lots on Kettle Court East.
Okay.
So it's just a slight reduction of.
Is that the only area in the city?
From what, from what I gather, yes, I mean, you have residential uses, schools, and churches, and parks.
We love our churches.
All over the place.
Wasn't there a sliver up by Mud Tech along 16 there, that would have been a potential area?
They don't, they don't meet it with the resident, there is the zoning for it, because adult establishments are only allowed in M1, and there's only two M1 areas, they don't meet the threshold for distant, you've, they have the park lawn.
Ah, okay.
And, like, the Hawthorne stuff, it just, you don't meet the setback.
I'll make a motion, per Amy's recommendation, if you want me to read it, I will.
It works, it's, it's typed, she just read it, we're good. You got it?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Okay. That was Matt. Okay, so, reports of city officials, correspondence, it's in the packet, planner, you talked a lot, you got anything else?
I always have something to talk about.
Oh, jeez.
So, I didn't put a, a table in the packet, but 2025 calendar, we like to get it on the, on the website as soon as possible. I will not be here for the March meeting, so we will see what's on the agenda, hopefully we can keep it light, and then staff can manage it, or we can bring somebody in to manage that meeting, does not really work to move the date, just based on the, the schedule. November, this year, we moved it up a week because of Thanksgiving, it's up to you, I mean, it's the day before Thanksgiving, or we can move it up one week to November 19th, so either the 19th or the 26th is the normal date, any recommendation on that?
I'd rather move it up.
Move it?
Yeah, move it up.
All those like that, okay, so November 19th would be the, November meaning December, you have Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve on the last two Wednesdays, so it would be moved up a whole nother Wednesday, what I would do is plan that as a back, as a potential date, but try to do whatever I can to get people on the November meeting.
Plan what, like, the second weekend of December? Like, December 15?
You're talking the 17th of December?
Seventeenth, so the meeting would have to be December 17th?
I'd say let's plan on not having it, and see if we need to.
Okay, do you want me to not even have it on the schedule?
Well, I mean, I don't know, I think I should have said this offline, but.
Too late, turn it off.
If it's important to you, get yourself organized to get on the November agenda.
I'll suck at that. Yeah, I mean, right, I mean, I think that if we end up with a, with a need to have one, we can always schedule one, why schedule one and have two items?
That's fine.
I'd say, let's not have one in December, and I don't think that, that, that's a big inconvenience based on how the calendar works.
When we move it up so much, it usually does make it harder for people to meet the deadline.
People can't meet the deadlines, especially with a different, well, thanks.
Sure.
That's all I have today.
Okay. Was that an executive decision? I think you got, we had a lot of head nods, though, okay.
Yes.
All right, so building inspector's not here, regular meeting is January 29th, 2025, submittal deadline is on New Year's, good luck, seeing no further business, we're adjourned at 8:31 PM, thank you.